Good evening. Can everybody in the back hear me?
Yes.
Okay. If you can't, just wave your hand and I'll adjust. All right? On behalf of the St. Louis League of Women Voters and our hosts, the Lindbergh School Board, and particularly Andrea Hosenfeld, who's our contact, we're glad to be here. And this forum will be available on the Lindbergh station. So if you know some folks who couldn't come here tonight, they can watch the whole forum. My name is Kathleen Farrell, and I'm with the League of Women Voters. And I'm going to be your moderator tonight. I want to just say that we've got three students here in the front row. If you'd stand up so they can see you. And your faces. Turn around. And they've been working with us on a project called Youth Engagement in Government. And they are going to be asking some student questions and helping us with some other things tonight. And we're really happy because we need this generation to stand up and defend democracy. Don't you agree?
Yes.
Okay. I want to thank the candidates for participating. You're going to elect two of them. And for a three-year term. And they are in order as they are on the ballot.
Yes, if you could turn it down a little.
Turn, I can't turn it down. But that gentleman back there behind the curtain can do it. Thank you. And Ms. Julia Voss, Ms. Jennifer Miller, Mr. Russell Dahmer, Mr. David Randleman. Okay? And Mr. Martin Verplank could not be here tonight. So here's what we're going to do. The gentleman who's representing him over there is going to read his opening statement, and then he's going to go sit back in the audience. But we wanted to have that. You don't need to do that yet because we're doing it in ballot order. But I will call you, and I'm very happy that you've agreed to do that. Now, first of all, we want everybody to try to hold their applause so we can get as many questions in as possible. These candidates are going to give their opening statements in this order on the ballot, and their closing statements in the reversed order, which means Mr. Randleman would be first for that. The League believes that one of the best ways for voters to learn about people who want to represent you and spend your taxpayer dollars is to hear candidates speak and answer questions in an engaged public forum. Not just have a flyer on your door, although that's good. You know, not just call you and leave you a message, not just see a big ad someplace or a yard sign, but to answer your questions. Now, things have gotten pretty complicated in our political world. And some people say we can't even have a civil discussion about federal government, state government, local government. But we're going to prove them wrong tonight. Because I know you're here because you care about your schools. So in order to make that happen, so that you can make a reasoned decision before you vote, we've got some rules that are going to help us all work together to do that. Candidates, as I said, are going to have two minutes for opening statements. Then each of them is going to have one minute to answer each question. Even if a question is addressed to a particular candidate, I'm going to tweak it so that everyone can answer it. Because everyone is going to get to answer every question. And then, of course, they're going to have two-minute closing statements. Now, here's your job. And you've got the most important job. And a number of you have already sent in questions on our online submission system. We don't make up the questions. The school district does not make up the questions. The candidates don't suggest questions to us. These questions come exclusively from you all. So what I want you to do, if you haven't already done it, is to write questions of general interest directed to one candidate or the group on cards that have been distributed to you. Please only have one question on one card. Because I'm an old lady, and I can only handle one question on each card. I am going to do my job. And my job is to retain the option of combining questions together if they're about the same thing. And I already see a lot of similar questions, so I'm going to do that. I'm going to make sure that each candidate has an equal opportunity to answer them. I'm going to enforce the rules. Now, if you want to audiotape this or videotape this, that's great. This is an open forum. Now, with that in mind, anybody have any questions before we start? Everybody ready? And again, try to refrain clapping so that we can get one or two more questions in. How about that? And everybody turn off your cell phones. All right. We're going to start with opening statements. And I believe Ms. Voss, you're first.
Great. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight to listen to us and meet the candidates so that you can have an informed vote on April 8th. My name is Julia Voss, and I moved into the Lindbergh School District about 10 years ago. We were living in South City, and I wanted my children to have the education that my husband had, because he talked about how great Lindbergh was. And his sister was a teacher here. His cousin was a teacher here. And so we moved here specifically so that our kids could go to Lindbergh schools. I have one now. Well, when we moved here, they were starting kindergarten. And I now have one in high school. Doesn't seem possible. And two at Truman. I am running for the board again. I have served one term, one three-year term already. And I'm running for the board again because I think that Lindbergh Schools is what holds this community together. We are a mishmash of municipalities and unincorporated. And there's not a sense of community that is so strong as what community revolves around Lindbergh Schools. This is what Lindbergh does for the community. It is the heart of the community. And I think that I share the same values as this community. I support students at all levels of learning and with different interests, and Lindbergh does that as well. I show my support for teachers, and Lindbergh does that by having a really open and respectful relationship with its teachers. It didn't used to. There wasn't, the prior administration had a really difficult relationship with the teachers, and it showed in the schools. And now that has been repaired, and an open line of communication helps the teachers and the administration work together to do what is best for our students. And I share the value of a respectful dialogue. The district has board advisories that are made up of community members, teachers, parents. There are students on them. Oh, already? All right. Well, I didn't even get through half of it. So I'll end with, I hope you vote for me on April 8th. Thank you.
Ms. Miller. And I'm watching the clock.
Okay. Goodness. Good evening. Again, thank you to the League for moderating, to Lindbergh for hosting, and to everyone that could be here with us tonight. I'm Jennifer Miller, and I am currently on the Board of Education and running for reelection. My husband and I moved to Lindbergh. We bought our first home in Lindbergh 20 years ago because we knew that Lindbergh was a wonderful place to live, was a great community, and had an exceptional school district. And we've stayed in Lindbergh because of those things. We have two children, an eighth grader at Sparring and a 10th grader at Lindbergh High School. Professionally, I work as an early intervention therapist with the Missouri First Steps Program. I provide early intervention therapy to young children with developmental delays and disabilities. I am running for reelection because I wanted to continue to carry on Lindbergh's longstanding tradition of academic excellence, continue to work on the priorities our community has identified, and ensure we continue to have good relationships with our staff. I will also prioritize rigorous instruction, safe and secure school buildings, workforce development programs, fiscal responsibility, and oversight through the use of outside audits for finances, communications, and strategic planning. While serving as a board member, I also volunteer with many other Lindbergh organizations. I serve on multiple board advisory and task forces. I am a member of the Sparring and the Lindbergh High School parent groups, and I currently serve as the Special School District Governing Council alternate. I continue to volunteer at my children's schools for various events and activities. It is important to me to give back to my community and the one that takes such good care of my own children, and that's Lindbergh. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Dahmer.
Push that button. Yep.
I am a retired civil engineer. I spent over three decades designing, building, and troubleshooting water-treating systems for American Industries. I've worked in power stations, data centers, electronics fabs, refineries, and food processing facilities. I have a pretty good idea what it takes to make the world work. Let me assure you, it does not work because we simply wish it to. It works because educated, dedicated people make it work. You drink from a tap and can trust the water is safe. You cross a bridge, you can trust it will not collapse. You eat food from a can and can trust it is wholesome and not adulterated. You benefit every day from the education legacy of generations ago. But your grandchildren will live with the education legacy of the current status quo. Your grandchildren will drink water treated by people who reject the principles of chemistry because they were taught those principles come from dead white guys. Your grandchildren will cross bridges designed by people who are taught that math is racist. Your grandchildren will eat food processed by people who were taught that whatever they do is good enough, and they have anticipation trophy to prove it. Your grandchildren will suffer a crisis of incompetence, a crisis of the status quo's making. We can prevent this crisis. We can make Lindbergh number one again. We can reject the utter waste that is wokeness in favor of serious academic excellence. Far more is at stake than trendy theories. The safety, the health, the very lives of your grandchildren, their friends and classmates are at stake. We can rescue your grandchildren from a crisis of incompetence if we change the status quo.
Thank you. Mr. Randleman.
Yeah, thank you. My name is David Randleman, and I want to extend my thanks and appreciation for being here today to the community, to the school district, and to the League of Women Voters. I also want to recognize and express appreciation to our former board members present today, Kara Horton and Mike Tischlis. Mike, I especially want to thank you for your years of service, not only on the Board of Education, but also on the Lindbergh Foundation. I understand that partisan politics has made its way to a point where your volunteer efforts were no longer wanted. And I see that as a sad low point. I want to say that I appreciate you. So do many of us in the community. And in the spirit of bringing us back together as a single, united community, I call on our district to throw out partisan politics and treat everyone with respect. What we do as adults is being observed by our children. The divisive attitudes must stop. I am running because I care about our public school system, and even more so, I care for Lindbergh Schools. I have a lot of experience with the district. I have had four students in Lindbergh Schools, two alumni, and in the aggregate, 28 years of student years' experience. I have personally invested in educating myself during these last four years to understand the strength and weakness of the district. No board is healthy if it only has one viewpoint and perspective. And I believe that I can bring the overlooked community perspectives. My values are focused on restoring academic excellence, fiscal responsibility towards the taxpayer, a common sense approach to education, and bringing transparency back. I believe the striving for equity in outcomes has hurt our academics, and no matter how we look at it, we are 10 points behind our neighbor's school districts like Kirkwood, Ladue, and Rockwood.
Your time is up, Mr. Randleman.
Thank you.
And now we're going to have an opening statement representing Mr. Martin Verplank, sir? And can you see the time?
Yes, ma'am. I've noticed.
Okay. All right.
My name is Martin Bennett, and I'm representing Martin Verplank, otherwise known as Hank. And I'm speaking in the first person, as Hank. I'm running to Port Lindbergh School District Board of Education. I grew up going to public schools in rural Michigan and rural Missouri, where farmers and people who worked in the trades were on the school boards. We learned fiscal responsibility in the core academics of math, science, reading, writing, civics, gym, music, and art. At lunch, we pulled down tables from the wall in the gym for a lunch cafeteria, and none of us ever felt underprivileged because of it. When my wife and I moved to Crestwood over 20 years ago, Lindbergh Schools District was one of the best in the state with high academic proficiency and had low taxes. Over the past two decades, my taxes have almost tripled. The middle class are being squeezed out of this area due to the wasteful spending and no accountability. 10 years ago, when Lindbergh was the number-one school district in the state, the board was made up of a diverse group of varying philosophies, a couple progressives, a couple moderates, and a couple conservatives. Now the board is made up of seven NEA-backed progressives. These members and candidates receive thousands of dollars from special interest groups, and the result is that over the last several years, the school board has voted unanimously well over 90% of the time. When there's no diversity on the board, there is no accountability to taxpayer. An example would be the $12 million mistake where concrete was poured for a new school building where the concrete permits were obtained, so the whole project had to start over, and taxpayers are on the book, on the hook. The Scottish history professor Tyler once wrote, "From bondage to spiritual faith, from spiritual faith to great courage, from courage to liberty, from liberty to abundance, from abundance to complacency, from complacency to apathy, from apathy to dependence, from dependence back into bondage." Lindbergh Schools are great, but need new leadership, responsible leadership. Please vote for me. Thank you very much, Martin Hank Verplank.
Thank you, sir. All right. Now, we're going to start the questions, and we rotate who goes first and who goes last. So we're going to start with Ms. Miller for the first question. And let me just say that these questions are all from the audience, and they are sent to us, the League, either ahead of time, some of them late this afternoon, or gotten from the audience. We don't give questions out ahead of time to the district, to candidates. Even our volunteers don't know what they are unless they're me. So I just thought I would tell you that. And we're going to start with this question, and two people out of 80 questions, we got asked this question. What about Title IX, particularly if it goes away with the Department of Education? What will happen if this funding disappears for some of our students who need it? What would you do? Ms. Miller?
Well, there's a lot of uncertainty around the Department of Education and how that funding would work. So it's kind of hard to just guess and address that. But I would say, as a community, as a board, our staff, I mean, we would have to bring people together to talk about what our priorities are and what we want for our students. And that will just have to lead those talks into, you know, where we find that money within our own budget. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Dahmer.
Yeah, I have to agree with Ms. Miller that it's extremely complex. We don't know what the numbers are. We can't answer unless we know what the numbers are. The community is already under heavy tax burden, and that seems like a poor choice. However, we're going to have to find internal solutions to that problem. But unless you know what the problem is, you can't solve it. And we don't know what that problem is yet.
Okay. Mr. Randleman.
I share with the same answer as Russ here. I think it's always a problem to try and talk about what-if questions and what the legislator will do. So I think that's a problem you tackle when you have to.
Okay. Thank you. For the second question, we're going to start with you, Mr. Dahmer. Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. Ms. Voss.
That's okay. I don't have much to add to it because it's, I mean, that's the right answer. There's nothing, we don't have it in front of us right now. We don't know what's going to happen. And Title IX is a congressional entitlement, so it should still exist. But we will just see what happens.
Okay. Thank you. Now that I've made a mistake, we can all relax. We're going to begin with you this time, Mr. Dahmer. And the question is about teachers, part one. How will you work with them? And part two, now that you've done all this building, isn't it time to significantly raise teacher salaries?
Answer the second question first. No, I think teacher salaries right now are very competitive in the region, and I don't think a substantial increase is warranted at this time. Besides, the district is strapped financially based on the prop or indebtedness, and now is not a time to incur massive increases in spending. The school board has to set standards for the school, and that's their job. And obviously, the teachers are part of that, but the school board sets the standards, and we have to work with the teachers on that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Randleman.
Yes. So I guess to the first part, how will I work with teachers? Well, I've spoken to a lot of teachers, and one of the main points, pain points I've heard is that a lot of times, it's hard for them to get through to the district. It's hard for them, to the administration in particular, that being the feet on the ground, when things aren't working or things need adjustment, it's hard for them to get that message across, or there's no response. I would look to facilitate a better line of communication and listen to our teachers. It's very important for me. The other part is, as far as salaries, I'm in favor of reducing our administrative layer, which I think is top-heavy. And I would like to reward teachers that are doing extremely well with extra merit. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Voss.
I think the district does a really good job of working with the teachers. There is an open line of communication between them at all times. Dr. Lake meets with the union president. I'm not sure how often. I know a lot. And if the teachers have a concern, they can take their concern to the union, and then the union can bring it to the administration. And then I know that we also, board members personally, talk to teachers a lot. I just had a conversation about the math curriculum with one of the teachers just last week. And when you serve on the board advisory committees, you end up talking with a lot of teachers on those. So the lines of communication are open. As far as the, now that the building's done, can we increase salaries? The capital funds are completely separate from teacher salaries. We can't intermix the two. They're two different funds. And so they're completely unrelated. And that's an important thing for the community to know, that all those, that prop money cannot be used for teacher salaries. But I do want the teachers to have competitive salaries.
You, Ms. Miller.
Thank you. So to address the first part, how we work with our teachers and open communication, as Julia mentioned, we do have board advisories. We have a lot of staff members who are on each of these board advisories, and they range from finance, facilities, teaching and learning, quite a variety of topics. Student life is another board advisory. And we always ask our teachers to apply and to sit on those committees, as well as task forces. You know, we used to kind of be a top-down, like, administration, this is, we tell you what to do. And we've tried to really change that approach to more bottom-up, like, what do you want to see us doing? What should we be working on? How do you want this to happen? And we need to give our teachers the freedom to be able to try those things and do what they need to do and what they're qualified to do. And again, Julia also mentioned, you know, we cannot spend building money on teacher salary. You know, our operational budget is very different and cannot, you know, the state does not allow you to spend money for buildings on teacher salaries or other operational costs. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we're going to start with you, Mr. Randleman. And let me just say that this is a question about DEI in Lindbergh, and I had a significant number of questions about that. So I'm going to try to group them in two or three questions as we go along about them. But here is one that was asked more than once. Now that we anticipate changes on the federal level and the state level about DEI, how will Lindbergh react to that? Will we eliminate a Department of DEI, a director? Should we? Why? Why not? You've got one minute.
Okay. Thank you. That's a loaded question, but somehow I anticipated it was going to come out my way. So as far as DEI is concerned, I want to ask a question from this community. What problem are we looking to solve? Before 2017, when we started putting all this stuff, what were we trying to solve? Were all our students racist that needed to be reeducated? Was that what happened, all of us? Well, let me tell you some of the outcomes since we put DEI in place. I understand the intent of the heart is good. The results have been bad. Challenge classes have been removed, again, and this was in the name of equity. Academic All-Stars removed, same, again, reason. Libraries were decolonized, removing classical books that held positive stories of individuals who happened to have white skin. Homework was made optional. This is for equity because it was explained that not all students have a supportive environment at home. Grades now start at 50%, and participation in class often merits passing grade. Discrimination based on race was found to be in the screening of the gifted program. Again, the same affirmative action.
Your time is up, Ms. Randleman.
Thank you. Should go.
Ms. Voss.
Inclusiveness is one of Lindbergh's core values. It will be here because we value students. And we will not stop valuing every student for who they are and what they bring to the table, ever. So I think that that is important for the community to know, because a student has to feel safe where they are in order to learn. A student cannot learn if they don't feel like they are respected and safe where they are. It is a part of the core values, and it's a part of everything we do. DEI became a bad word somehow. But I was just at a conference of mechanical engineers where they were talking about how important it is to have diversity in your staff, so that you have some people who come up with ideas, some people who implement them. And that, the whole room was like, oh, yeah, that makes sense. And so it's just when you put, diversity is a good thing until you put EI after it. And I will always, always vote to respect the students.
Your time is up. Okay. Ms. Miller.
Hello. So, you know, Lindbergh is a community that, you know, I already talked about, like, my family wanted to be here. And we want an inclusive community where everyone feels like they belong, and they are treated with dignity and respect. And I just can't imagine there's people here that don't want that. So, you know, we want our students to want to come to school and our staff to want to come to work here. And we have to be able to give students what they need in order to be successful, and that looks different for different students. And again, diversity of thought and opinions, you know, that's important. We need to be exposed to a wide range of thoughts to allow people to think critically and ask questions for their learning.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Dahmer.
Yes. I believe that all of our students deserve a fair and honest chance at a good education. However, DEI in practice is not the same as an open environment, an inviting environment. DEI, as I define it, is division, exclusion, and indoctrination. In practice, people are divided into groups, which excludes others. And then they are forced to be indoctrinated into whatever the favored group is. I disagree with this entirely and 100%. We should welcome all our kids, but we don't force things on anybody. All our kids deserve a fair, safe, open environment. But DEI in practice is costly, time-wasting, money-wasting, and actually divisive.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we've got our first student question, and we had four questions given to students. So here's our first student.
Why aren't there more classes teaching real-world skills? For example, teaching about taxes and basic survival skills.
So this one goes to you, Ms. Voss.
So I'm pretty impressed with the offering of the classes at the high school level. I think that if you look hard enough, you'll probably find some of these classes that have skills like that. There's a new nursing class that is coming around next year. That should be a really exciting class for some, from hands-on skills. There's the bio-med program that teaches a lot of hands-on skills. My daughter is in that, and she was just putting a, she was drawing blood on a fake thing, fake thing, the other day, just came back excited about that. So I do think that there are some classes that probably teach some of those, and there's a lot of art classes and shop classes that might have some aspect of that. But if there is a particular skill that the students want to learn, they should bring it to our student board advisory, the student board rep, and have them bring that to us because that's what he's there for.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Miller.
Thank you. At the At the high school level, we have really opened up our programming and are offering a lot of new classes. We are, next year, starting an AMPED class, which is an algebra business class worth two credits. And so it's not just a straight math class, but it brings in kind of that business, real-world aspect. What am I going to use this for when I graduate? Which my own son has asked me so many times. And as Julia mentioned, you know, we have a lot of our students who apply to South Tech for their CNA program, and just based on how many students they have applied, they get turned away. And so we were able to, through a grant, start our own CNA program for next year. We offer an EMT certification course, and we are also starting, like, a shop class with geometry for math as well. And we're also looking at internships and workforce development programs with our community so we can enhance even more programming. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dahmer.
Okay. Since I have not been on the board, I can't answer the student's question as to why those courses aren't offered. However, I would say it's a great idea. The whole point of, of education is not just math and science, those are important, but life skills are also important. And if Ms. Miller is correct, there are new offerings on the way, but I would support that 100% because life skills are essential for the student's future.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Randleman.
Thank you. Well, one of the things that I've been really pushing on the last two years is increasing vocational opportunities, and I also believe in, in just the, the life skills in general. I think around 80% of our students or more go to college, but I think there's actually a, a much greater need to have vocational opportunities. And I would like to see more workshops open in the school to really mentor and, and give students an opportunity to see if that's something for them, as well as the college path.
Okay, thank you. And I think we're going to start with you this time, Ms. Miller. And question about money. And there was, you say money? Money. And there were a number of questions about money. And people are saying that there are going to be cuts from the legislature, that there might be cuts from the federal level. How are you going to confront those cuts and deal with them?
Well, Lindbergh is in a unique position when in comparison to a lot of districts in Missouri, that we receive most of our funding locally. Over 80% is local. We do not actually receive very much federal money. It's about $460,000 a year. Because of SSD, they, all special education money is separated from us. It goes directly to them. And then, you know, we get a little bit of state money, too, to make up from that 88% I think was, I can't remember exactly how much locally funded we are. But again, we don't know if cuts will need to be made. Because we have so much local funds, hopefully, if cuts are needed, they won't be very deep. And I think, again, as I mentioned earlier, we will have to talk as a community about how to prioritize what's important to Lindbergh and for their students, what has the least amount of impact on student learning, direct student learning. And, you know, we have a finance committee that can also help with that. You know, these are professionals in finance that live in our community and volunteer their time to look over our information and, thank you.
Your time is up. Thank you. Mr. Dahmer.
Yes, the school spends, in my opinion, an ordered amount on DEI, critical race, and other really non-academic issues. It's difficult to determine exactly how much that is, but that's the place to start. Things that are not contributing to education need to be taken out of our budget. Right now, we have a serious problem with Prop R in that we are only actually paying the interest on the loans, and we don't know what the long-term impact that is going to be. So since our funding is mostly local, that does give us an advantage over many other places, but there are things in our budget that need to be removed.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Randleman.
Thank you. I try to stay close, pay close attention to the legislator, at least on the state level. And as far as I've seen, there's no intent of taking any funds away. In fact, it's actually recently been supplementing, and that's, that's great. I think if there, I think we do have to prepare our district for more difficult and challenging times, only because property assessments, I believe, will eventually stagnate. I don't believe that we can sustain 6% increases year over year, or assessment after assessment, and keep up with the payment requirements. Every household in this district is going to be paying about $13,000 of extra tax. So it's good, it's prudent for us to start preparing for that situation in advance. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms., Ms. Voss.
One thing that I think is important as we talk about school finances, to try to help the community understand how it works. It's very confusing. It took me a while to understand school finance. And the, the one thing that we have actually asked Dr. Lake to do is, is come to the community and just give little bits, it is listening and learnings, to, to start talking about that so that people can understand school finance. Because your tax rates haven't changed. If you're paying more in taxes, it's because your house values have gone up, and your house values have gone up because you live in a district. It's amazing. And so I think there's probably some truth that they, they can't rise forever, and we may have to start to make some cuts. But if we do have to do that, I am hopeful that we can find ways to do it in a way that's not impactful to student learning, because, as Jennifer said, most of our money is local money, and if the cuts are at the state level, then it won't impact us as much. On, on the loan that we have, it extends our loan five years. We, that was all.
Your time is up. We are going to start with you this time, Mr. Dahmer. And since someone brought up the special school district, there are several questions about that, so I think it's timely to go to it right now. People are expressing in your questions concerns about the future of the special school district. And another group of questions is asking, should Lindbergh and the special school district have equal say about Lindbergh's students? So what do you think the future is there, and what would you do as a board member to make sure that you work well with the special school district to help these vulnerable students?
Well, my understanding is that the special school district is a separate district. It's funded separately, but that the two districts coordinate, and that's the answer. The leadership of the two districts need to work together to understand what the needs are and make sure that the needs are met. So I have no idea what the future of the special school district is. I don't know what their challenges are, but as long as Lindbergh can be of assistance, teaching and training students for the future, regardless of where they come from or what their basic abilities are, is part of the district's job.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Randleman.
Yes, so I know that our school district has been making attempts and improving the communication between Lindbergh and the SSD. And I was told last year that Liaison is sitting in the admin offices in order to help coordinate with that collaboration, and that sounds like to me that we're on the right track. I'm not advocating for the SSD because I don't know a lot of what's happening internally, but I know that they're being stretched a lot thinner than they used to be. There are a lot more students in need of services. So ultimately, I'm hoping that Lindbergh schools and the SSD can continue and develop that relationship and that we can get the funding needed for the SSD as well.
Thank you. Ms. Voss.
Lindbergh and SSD, I do think, have been improving their communication over the past few years. When I first came onto the board, I was hearing about teachers just not being in the classroom and, and the regular classroom teachers having to handle all the students because SSD couldn't find subs. And that has improved over the past three years immensely. They, they aren't having that problem anymore, so that's an improvement. And we did recently work with SSD to make sure that we had enough staff from SSD. They were proposing taking some away, and we fought very hard to keep them, and we were able to get appropriate staffing when, in, when working with SSD that way. So the, the relationship is improving, and I hope it continues to. I, the finances at SSD are something that is a little shaky, I guess, but they are, they are working to right the ship, and I'm hopeful they can for all of our students' sake.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Miller.
Thank you. Yes, so SSD is having some financial issues right now. We do have a director of special ed from SSD who is housed in Lindbergh and only assigned to Lindbergh, and, you know, SSD, upper SSD proposed to cut 10 SSD positions at Lindbergh, and that director fought and was able to keep seven of those positions. We need to do what we can for our students. My own children have received services from SSD. I have sat in those meetings, and I have seen how Lindbergh teachers have fought for our kids and aren't always listened to. And yes, we have to make sure that that is an open collaborative relationship where communication is happening constantly. Yes, so I do want Lindbergh to have a say for our students, because at the end of the day, they are our students, and we need to make sure they are successful and that they have the programs and the services they need to learn and to succeed.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to start with you this time, Mr. Randleman. And there are a number of questions about academic achievement in the district. I'm going to cluster them together, but we're going to start with this one. Recent test scores for Lindbergh are of great concern. And again, I haven't looked at them, so I can't verify this, but going to give you the sense of it. Some say that 40% of our students are, are below what we would like to see in terms of proficiency in math and, and, and science. What do you think we should do to address that?
Well, I guess this really goes back to the leadership and what's been happening in our district the last decade or so. But we decided to move away from testing for, for the MAPS scores and de-emphasizing that, and we relied on other metrics like the NWA and, and student progress. But what I will say is even the NWA scores show that we are not as proficient as we used to be. We're, in fact, we're a long way. And what I'd like to see is Lindbergh schools go back to emphasizing academic excellence. It's, it's changing our, our direction back to that, and we need to be a destination school district, and so that's what I'd hope to see.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Voss.
So the MAPS scores are difficult to compare over years because the test changes. And so if you want to go back to like 2016, you really just can't do that. The test's a different test then than it was now. And DESI has a disclaimer on its website saying, don't compare this to prior tests. It's not the same test anymore. And so you really can only compare the tests that are current. And if you look at the last three years, since we have started a few new initiatives, more standards-based grading in the elementary and changing the reading element, the elementary, we have moved kids out of the below basic into basic, and it seems to be working, what we are doing. And if you look at the NWA scores, which is a test that is nationally normed, we are 80%, we're at the 80% mark for reading and just under for math, which is below our goal we do on math. We want to be higher than that in math. And so we need, one suggestion that we need to look at is what can we do at the elementary level in math to help the students?
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. So yes, MAPS test scores. We heard from our community for years that we need to stop test, teaching to the MAPS test, that we wanted true learning for our students. And yes, the test changed, and when that changed, we were no longer able to see the test before it was given, so we could no longer teach to the test. And the fact that we're seeing drop scores from that shows that we weren't having true learning, that they were just memorizing, wrote, drill, and kill for that test. Now, we do use some other things like NWA, FastBridge, and I Ready, and these are all nationally-normed tests. It's important to look at a variety of data points when we're talking about how well we're doing and what we need to work on. And as Julia mentioned, yes, we are saying 80%, 80% proficient on those NWA math and reading tests, and some of our buildings have upped those goals because they've already met them, and they're shooting for 85%. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dahmer.
The situation with, with basic rating is, basic is 39 to 50%, which by any measure is failing. So Lindbergh needs to totally refocus itself away from social learning to hard academics, classical academics. These kids, when they leave school, they go to university, they go to the workplace, they need to know what they're doing, and they need to know the hard academics. There's plenty of time outside of school with their family and their friends to learn their social issues, but hard academics is what school needs, and we need to revert, really, to what was done 10, 15 years ago when Lindbergh was a blue-ribbon, number-one in the state kind of school. And we're not there today.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to start with you this time, Ms. Voss. And the question is about the gifted program. And there were three questions about the gifted program. And in essence, what they all boil down to has, is have we watered down the standards for the gifted program? Have we decreased challenge classes? How do we deal with these kinds of challenges?
In order to be a part of the gifted program, you have to test in the 95th percentile of, I think it's an IQ test of some sort, and that is the bar that you have to meet to be in the gifted program. And so, no, there's no watering down. Lindbergh has, I think, about 11% of its student body in the gifted program. That is well above the, the average in the state, which I don't remember offhand, but I think is somewhere around 5% or 6%. And I think that's just a testament to, to the students. There's, we don't want to keep students out just because we're trying to reach a 5% number. We want every student who qualifies to be in the gifted program if they can.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Miller.
Yes, our gifted program requires a 95th percentile or above on the IQ test, and we have over 10% of our students that fall into that score. We have not watered down the requirements to get into gifted. They have been that 95th percentile for a long time. In fact, many of our neighboring districts have raised that to 98th percentile on the IQ test in order to qualify, just so they can reduce their numbers in their gifted program. But Lindbergh believes that if, you know, that national standard is 95th percentile or above, that you should qualify for those services and you should have access to them. Regarding challenge classes, giftedness and achievement are a little, high achievers are not necessarily gifted and vice versa. We do offer acceleration for our students who are high achievers. If they are performing very well in math, we have ways for them to take math class in the grade above them or two grades above them. So, thank you.
Mr. Dahmer.
Yes, with regard to the, the challenge classes, which have been largely eliminated, has made that jump from middle school to high school much more difficult for the gifted students. And so we're seeing fewer students into the gifted program because they lost that step at the end of, end of middle school. We're also seeing the elimination of, on the other end of the spectrum, the elimination of the math assistance programs, which is shortchanging our poor-performing students who need to help the most. The greatest resource in the United States today is not oil or gold or uranium, it's the mines of the undereducated kids. And leaving those kids behind is a disaster for them, and it's a disaster for the country.
Okay.
Yes, first of all, please go to my website, randelman.com, look at the video series, Episode 5, I spoke in depth about our gifted program. Yes, we are watering down our gifted program. Here's a simple math problem to solve it, and our fifth grade, 20% of our students are in the gifted program. It's supposed to be a 95th percentile. How is that possible? The reason is, we have an alternative pathway which does use not only the 95th, 95% IQ, but it also allows for 80, I think it's 85 or 80% as a redundant test. So it can be a verbal 95, and it could be an 80% on the second IQ test. So that allows for more students to enter the program, plain and simple. We are losing our mission of, of the 95th percentile. Thank you.
Okay. So we're going to start with you this time, and we are, pardon me?
I think it's my turn.
Okay.
I mean, you can start.
No, no, no. Thank you for keeping me in line. I seriously need it. This is sort of a related question, but another question about this is, have we changed our grading standards because of our concerns for more vulnerable students?
I have two children that attend Lindbergh schools, and I have not seen this. My children are required to do homework. My children are required to do homework almost every night. In fact, there was an argument before I left tonight about that. And I don't see grading changing. It has not changed for them since they have been in kindergarten. We have switched to standards-based grading at the elementary level. This is something that, you know, the East Coast has been doing for years and provides more feedback to students, to teachers, and to their parents about what their child knows and what they need to work more on, what's a concern and what's a weakness. At the high school level, we're still using traditional grading in eighth grade as well. You know, and it's that typical ninety to a hundred percent is an A on down that we all had when we were in school. And I, I mean, I see it working just as it did when I was in high school. Thank you.
Mr. Dahmer.
Yes, my understanding is that the schools have gone to equity-based grading, beginning students at fifty percent and counting up from there, which is not a good idea. It's designed to basically bring the grades together and raise the grades of the perhaps underserved or those with difficult beginnings in life. But that is a cheat on the poor-performing students. It is a cheat. Telling them they're doing better than they are is no good for anybody. So equity-based training, or equity-based grading needs definitely to go away in its entirety.
Mr. Randleman.
Thank you. So standard-based grading, good. But what we have done is we've all adopted this book here at Lindbergh Schools called Grading for Equity. I was given a copy of this book by this very administration. My fellow board members have read the same book. And what it does is it brings in equity in the grades. In fact, Dr. Cochrane has also spoken about this in his high school seminar when referring to starting the grade from the fiftieth percentile. My daughter, who is recently a senior in this high school here, has not received homework. Homework became an optional thing. Grammar wasn't, taking the grade off when they got the spelling wrong. A lot of different things have sort of been lowered in the bar in order to push grading for equity infused with standard-based grading. So we're using standard-based grading. It's not the same thing as the classic standard-based grading. Thank you.
Thank you. You, Ms. Voss.
The standards-based grading that we're, we're talking about is the teachers set a priority. They, they look at what the state wants, they look at what Lindbergh thinks is important, and they set priority standards that they want every student to learn. And so as they go through their classroom, they are every day or every grading period checking against this standard to say, "Has this child met this standard?" And it's a score of, it's exceeding expectations, it's, there's, there's levels of it. And so there, there's no fifty percent. It's, it's, it's a letter. And so the elementary students up through sixth grade now, I believe, do not actually have letter grades. They get meeting expectations on these standards so that you know exactly what your student knows or doesn't know. They, you might be doing really well on fractions in math and you're exceeding expectations, but you might not understand division or on division. And so that's where you're going to get the below or the area of concern. And so that's how they're graded.
Thank you. Your time is up. Okay, we've got a student question about DEI and related matters. And we're going to start with you, Mr. Dahmer.
How do you define diversity and what would you do to protect our most vulnerable students?
Diversity is just a lot of different types of, of people. So it's a relatively simple definition in my mind. All students, regardless of who they are, where they come from, need to have a safe and fair learning environment. So rather than break students up into groups and provide certain groups with certain protections where other groups are left out, we need to have an overall view that every student is an individual. I don't believe in group rights, I believe in individual rights. And that's the way the school should handle our students. Every student should be treated as an individual fairly, honestly, and safely.
Mr. Randleman.
Thank you. Well, one of the big things I appreciate about this school district, and I think it's a testament to the American society in general, is the acceptance of those who are different. We have been immigrants here in this country, and I want to say that this community has accepted us with open arms. And I would expect nothing less towards every single person in this community, full stop. What we're trying to do now, where we identify people only based on their sexuality and other things, I think that's something that's a personal thing. You're here to, to learn academics. Everyone deserves the equality of, of those rights, and that's what I believe in. And that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Voss.
Diversity and inclusion, it just means in Lindbergh, I think, to make sure that every student has what they need to succeed. And not every student needs the same thing to succeed. Some students might need to have additional counseling. So we hired more counselors. There are more counselors now available for students so that if they are going through any kind of struggles that, that are not academic, they can, they have people to talk to in the schools so that they can get the help that they need. We also need to make them, make students feel safe and aware. The LGBT community is more likely to commit suicide than, than non-LGBT communities. I think it's something like twenty-five percent higher rate of suicide. We have to make sure that they feel that they are valued for who they are, not in spite of who they are. And one way to do that is to allow them to have books in the library that have characters that reflect that. And if a parent doesn't want their child to read that book, I'm on board with that. Don't let your child read it.
Your time is up. Thank you very much. We are going to start with you.
I still.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
You know what? You and I are going to share a bottle of wine.
Excuse me, start someone else first. That's great. So when we talk about diversity, I think we're talking about, you know, differences, a variety of thought, variety of opinion. We all look different, we have different experiences, and we need to value those things in each other and learn from them. And we do need to protect our student, all of our students, including those that are most vulnerable. And we need to ensure that all these students receive programs and services they need to thrive in our schools and in life. You know, we have, students come to us from all different backgrounds. They come at different levels, they need different things. And we need to be able to differentiate our instruction and our services to meet those needs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to start with you this time, Mr. Randleman. And this question was asked by two folks, and it is about, "What do you do about students who are disruptive in class, even violent? Why is this tolerated?"
Yeah, thank you. So I've, I've definitely received a lot of reports that that's happening. Some school buildings, like Dressel especially, are hit hard with that. And I think we need to take a stronger approach towards students who are being disruptive because of not being only disruptive to themselves, but their fellow students. And it's hard on teachers, too. A lot of teachers confided that it's, they, they're not allowed to do anything about it. And so discipline and consequences of your actions is a good thing. We have to do it in a constructive way, but I would like to see stronger discipline in our district.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Voss.
I, I think that we do need to discipline children who are disruptive, but I think it needs to be done in a way that is helpful and not just punishment. It needs to be done in a way that helps get to the root of the problem, not just go sit in a corner. Now, I, I think that a lot of the help that kids need when they're being disruptive, some of it is because they have an undiagnosed, like ADHD or an, an undiagnosed problem. And if we can help that child, give them services, then we can help the problem, not just the problem of the minute in the classroom. However, I do think that if a child is being disruptive, they do need to be removed from the classroom to keep learning going.
Ms. Miller.
Thank you. So there are board policies and procedures that follow, that, you know, to just talk about disruptive students and behaviors within school and what those consequences can be. On the day-to-day basis, principals are the people responsible for determining what those consequences are for behaviors within the day. You know, I do feel like behaviors have increased, not just in schools. We've seen, we see it everywhere. And we need to be able to work with our families and provide them with wraparound services so that their students can get the help that they need. And that help can be within the district, it can be with, outside of the district, but we do need to work together on that. Thanks.
Mr. Dahmer.
Sure. Discipline is clearly a matter of degree. As one who's spent quite a bit of time in the corner in elementary school, I know that a little bit of time in the corner is, is not a bad thing. Unfortunately, the, the situation has grown more intense, and that's where the, the school must react. The teachers cannot be hung out to dry with disruptive and especially violent students in the classroom. The teachers must be able to transfer those disruptive and dangerous students to the principal, and when law enforcement needs to be involved, they need to be involved. Parents must be involved, and the school is not the only resource. The parents must be notified, the parents must be involved.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Randleman.
I, I thought I covered the discipline question.
Yeah, you start.
Okay, good. We are going now to go to a set of questions which deal with candidates, individual philosophies, their relationship with the school district, what they think is constructive behavior. There's a lot of questions in here about who was funding who and those kinds of things. And I'm going to try to put them in questions that I think are fair, and we're going to start with those. What do you do, Ms. Voss, when your personal beliefs conflict with the district's?
As a board member, you have to make sure that you're following, following the policy. I can vote the way I feel anytime, and I always will. But at the end of the day, if the, if the board makes a decision and it's not the decision that I would have made, I still have to live with that and support that as a board member. And I, I have, there have been circumstances where I disagreed with the, with the course we were taking, but I had to take it because that was what we were going to be, that was what was going to happen. So I think that they, my background as an attorney actually helps me with this because I have had to represent clients where I didn't always agree with what they wanted the argument to be, but we, we'd had to go make the argument. And so I have a lot of practice doing this, and I understand that you can only have order if the rules are followed and if, if you don't cry when you lose your decision.
Thank you. Ms. Miller.
Thank you. So again, we do have board policies and procedures to help with these kinds of things, to make sure they are being followed. At the end of the day, when I sit at the board table, I want to do what's best for students, all students. I ask questions at board meetings, I share my thoughts, especially at workshops and in the board advisories I'm in, when there's more open discussion time. I feel like I ask a lot of questions when we're acting as a board, and I share my opinion. But at the end of the day, like, I'm going to vote for what's best for students. And regardless of the direction I vote, whatever is the majority of the board is how we move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Dahmer.
It will be a certainty, if I am on the board, I will be a minority member of the board. And it will be my job to vigorously advocate for strong academics and against those things I think are a waste of time and money. And to work with, debate with, even negotiate with the majority on the board and hope to get as much of sound academics built back into this, this school as is possible. However, I've been outvoted before in other places, and I know what it's like. You have to go with leadership of the majority of the vote. I will continue to advocate for my beliefs and, again, have to follow the majority.
Okay, Mr. Dahmer. I mean, Mr. Randleman.
Thank you. Well, first of all, my intent would always be to try to work with the board and have conversation and reason and, and maybe convince others to my perspective or vice versa. So always good to have a healthy conversation. But at the end of the day, I'm not only representing my values, I'm representing those who elected me and the taxpayers. We don't talk a lot about the taxpayers, and we don't talk a lot about families and parents. And so if those who are behind me want to see certain change, like of refocus on academics and removal of political things from the school, then I'll stay true to those values no matter what.
Okay, thank you very much. I've got a cluster of questions, and I hope this works because I want to cover as much of this kind of topic as I can, that I think are simple yes or no questions. And so if it's all right with everybody, we'll do that. And who do I get to start with now? It's you. I wanted to make you feel special. Okay. So yes or no? Do you believe in the concept of open enrollment that the present legislature is discussing? Yes or no? Open enrollment?
There's more than one in the legislature right now.
Okay. You do believe in the concept of open enrollment?
No.
How about you, Mr. Dahmer?
Not a fair yes or no, but I'll say yes.
Okay. How about you, Mr. Randleman?
Yes, because they don't take funds from public school.
Thank you. Yes or no? And if the audience would please be respectful, we could get more questions in. Ms. Voss?
No.
All right. So we're going to go to the second question, and this time, I believe, it's Mr. Dahmer who gets to start. Do you believe in school vouchers which can be used in private schools? Yes or no?
Again, not a fair question for yes or no, but I'll say yes.
Okay. You, Mr. Randleman.
Yes, yes, please. Thank you.
No.
No.
Okay. We're going to start with you this time, Mr. Randleman, and I have five questions about this, so I'm just going to ask everybody. Has everybody's students, I mean, children, all of them, always attended Lindbergh schools? Mr. Randleman?
No.
Yes.
Ms. Voss?
Yes.
Is this a yes or no?
Yes.
Nope.
Okay. So we've covered that now, and we're going to go to a longer answer question. And this is dealing with something that's very, very important to a board member, and that is, why do you defend public education? And we are starting, is it Mr. Dahmer we're starting with this time? I believe it is.
Great. Now I get to answer the last three questions. I attended Lindbergh schools from nineteen sixty-one through high school graduation in nineteen seventy-four. Just celebrated fifty years. When I was in school, the concept of school choice was nonexistent. Today, it is a massive movement around the country. I ask, "Why? Why is something unheard of fifty years ago a national movement today?" The reason it is, is as sad as it is simple. Because parents in ever-increasing number are becoming disillusioned with the public school, and they're looking for and demanding alternatives. The way to protect our public school is to have excellent, outstanding academic institutions without the controversy.
Thank you. Mr. Randleman.
Yes, so I'm a big proponent of the public school system because I see it as the great equalizer in our American society. It doesn't matter if you're rich, if you're poor, you can go into a public school and become an excellent, excellent academically and prepared for life. However, just like Ross here expressed, we're not seeing that same delivery of academic excellence coming out of our school districts. And that's why we're running. That's why I'm running. We want to see that return, and it's sort of a, a warning light, a red flag. Please, wake up. Go back to the academics. We get all the social issues and everything, but we got to focus again on the ABCs and one-two-threes and prepare our students for life. Thank you.
Ms. Voss. Ms. Voss.
Free public education for all is a right in this country. And so, I defend public education for that reason, to make sure that every student has the opportunity to go to a quality school. If we start eroding the tax base that pays for that free college, or free public education, then the districts that are going to suffer are probably not Lindbergh. We're probably going to be fine. Who's going to suffer are the rural districts who already don't have a lot of money, and the districts who are, who have less funds that are more funds that are coming from the state because all of, all of these programs pull money from public schools. And so, I defend public education so that every student, no matter where they are, can have a quality education. And the quality is here. Lindbergh is on the NWA scores that we were talking about early, earlier. That's a nationally normed test, meaning 50% of the national schools score 50 or below. We're at the 80th. We're doing really well.
Thank you. Ms. Miller.
So, I went to private schools my entire life, preschool to master's degree. And I remember sitting in grade school and high school thinking, like, what else is out there? Like, I feel so limited. And so, I wanted more for my own children. My husband did, too. And public schools are for everyone. You don't get to pick and choose who comes in your doors. You don't get to pick and choose who deserves your services or your programs. They come in, and we do so much for them. You know, we are dedicated to offering as much as we can for our students and doing it well. We're held accountable to the people that we serve and to the people in our district, and it is apparent that people want to be here. You can look at the real estate market and see that. Very few houses are on the market, and when, and when they are, they're way overpriced. So, I just, thank you. It's my time.
Okay. We're going to be, everybody got a chance? We're going to be moving to, to closing statements after the last question, and I want to simply tell you that a number of questions that you all asked, it's not that I'm ignoring them, I believe that they belong answered in a closing question or statement because they're asking for your vote, okay? These are things like, what are your best qualifications? These are things like, why do you believe you will be a constructive force on the school board? These are things like, what do you think is your top priority? These are things like, what in your experience, what's the top thing in your personal experience or your professional experience which makes you best qualified to be on this board? So, you get a sense of it, right? And what's your commitment? So, I just want you to have that for your final statement, and I'm going to ask you one more question, okay? And that question has to deal with the Bailey lawsuit about Section 504 and IDEA. Three of you asked this question about, you're concerned about having special accommodations for students. And so, I'm asking you what's your position on that? What will you do?
I actually don't know too much about the details of this Bailey lawsuit on the 504. So, I apologize for not being familiar with it, but I will research it.
Okay. Ms. Voss?
Anytime there's any sort of legal action, we consult with our attorney and, and move forward that way. So, but I will tell you that on the 504 and IDEA, the, the, the 504 is there for the students who don't quite qualify for the IDEA, and it's a really important part of our education, and it keeps kids from falling behind. And so, it's important to make sure that we are doing what we can to protect both of those things.
Ms. Miller.
Thank you. So, IDEA is a federal law, and it's, you know, our special education law and why students have to get the services they need in order to be prepared and to move through school. Regarding Bailey's lawsuit and 504, 504 is necessary for students. It's, it's not just about giving ser, extra services to kids, it's about giving services to kids who need them in order to get through their day. We see, why we can't speak, in general, students with ADHD qualify for 504s. This allows them to take their medicine, to get reminders, to pack up their bag in time to leave for the day and things like that. These are ways to teach executive functioning skills to students and to support them so they can be successful in their day, in their week, and all of their learning at Lindbergh. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dahmer.
Yeah, I, like Mr. Randleman, I'm not familiar with the lawsuit, so I really can't speak to it.
Okay, thank you. So, what we're going to do now is have the closing statements, and we're going to start with Mr. Randleman. We're going to go up the ballot, and then we're going to have a last few remarks which are going to be given by our student. So, we're going to start with you, Mr. Randleman, your final statement, two minutes.
Thank you. Dear community, I chose to run as a grassroots candidate without the support of large PACs with financial interests in the district. Four years of running and talking to thousands of you has given me a vantage point that I believe bridges gaps we currently have on the board and the community. The political activists within have called me a Nazi despite being from Jewish heritage, a racist, a white supremacist, a book banner, and even bullied and threatened by some of the employees of this very district. But besides their labels being untrue, none of this phases me because I love this community and the school district despite the activist groups' hold on our board. I care for our students, and I see them as promising future of our nation. The definition of love is not approval of one's identity. The definition of love is caring for someone enough that you are willing to sacrifice for them, and by the grace of God, I hope to have that heart. I wish our students to be independent thinkers, full of knowledge of history, but without feeling blamed because of the color of their skin. I want to lift our underserved students by bringing in retired teachers, parents as teachers, and more community resources to help struggling students instead of adjusting their grades with equity. We are not doing any favors when we do that. I wish to show more responsibility with our usage of tax money because, as it stands, the average household in this district will be paying an extra $13,000 in taxes just to finance our recent spending spree. In summary, Lindbergh Schools needs to return to excellence because the reality is, demographic studies show that, showing a negative birth rate and an expectation of the student population collapsing within a few very short years. The only way to mitigate this collapse is to once again solidify our district as a top-strong destination district. Thank you for listening. God bless you all, and please vote for me on April 8th.
Mr. Dahmer.
In my years as a civil engineer, I worked with many intelligent and talented individuals. They were white, they were black, they were men, women, straight, and gay. But they all had one thing in common, they were all highly educated and thoroughly dedicated to their craft. Together, we solved many vexing problems, built outstanding facilities, made our world work just a little bit better. As Henry Aaron once said, "On the field, it doesn't matter what color you are or where you're from, all that matters is if you can play." This is how we should treat our students. It should not matter who they are, where they are from, but we need to teach them how to get by in the world and make the world a bit better because they were in it.
Ms. Miller.
Thank you. Thank you again to everyone who came tonight. I'm proud to be a part of Lindbergh. You know, we continue to be a desirable district to families and as a board member and as a parent. Other districts look at us as an example of how to do things right. DUCY is revamping how they are looking at education as it's come to Lindbergh to see our work in competency-based learning so that it can be used across the state. With the new high school building, the new gifted center, the continual growth of our student population, which is projected to continue to grow 100 students every year, our new programming and services, our dual college enrollment and workforce development programs, families want to attend Lindbergh schools. We are constantly researching, evaluating, analyzing, and making changes when needed and looking ahead to plan for the education of students so they are prepared for whatever future path they choose. And we do all of this with the lowest residential tax rate in St. Louis County, and I plan for that to continue. Lindbergh continues to be fiscally responsible, to prioritize programming and academics for all students and attract and retain high-quality teachers and staff. I am fully invested in Lindbergh and all of its students. My children attend Lindbergh, and I, of course, want the best for them and for all Lindbergh students. I've enjoyed my time on the board, and I hope that you will use one of your two votes on April 8th to vote for Jennifer Miller. Thank you.
And finally, you, Ms. Voss.
I have been honored to serve on the board for the past three years. It was harder than I thought it was going to be. It's, it's a lot more than just one meeting a month. There's hours of preparation for that meeting. It's serving on task forces, it's serving on board advisory committee meetings, it's going to, um, learning, professional learning. It, it takes a lot to be a board member, and I have enjoyed every minute of it. And I appreciate the fact that the community has put their faith in me to, to, to perform this role. I think the quality that I have that is most useful on the board is that I, I ask a lot of questions. I, I know that our administration is, is doing the best they can for kids, and so my job is to make sure that everything that they want to do has been well thought out. And so, we have meetings, we're at the board advisory, you may not hear them at the board meeting because by then, it's all been worked through. But the work behind the scenes is being done, and a lot of questions are being asked to make sure that what we do is in the best interest of kids at all time. And I think that is something that I can bring to the board, and I hope to get your vote on April 8th.
Okay, thank you. Let's give them all a round of applause. Takes courage to run for public office and to stand in the public light. One personal note before we have our final statement from our student here, and that is, you'll be happy to know that I'm getting new glasses this week on Friday, and I will be able to see the hashtags next to candidates' names on a piece of paper. So, thank you for your generosity of spirit toward me. We asked 16 questions. I think we got through a lot of things. So, don't clap yet because the last very important person is going to give you some information about the election.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for coming. Thank you. A big thanks to our candidates, to the League of Women Voters, and our hosts here at Lindbergh Schools. And in most importantly, thank all of you. Without you guys coming, this would not have been possible, and exercising your right to vote is incredibly important. If you found today at all helpful, please consider joining the St. Louis Metro League of Women Voters or making a modest donation to support this work we do to educate voters all over St. Louis. There will be volunteers as well as literature outside to talk with you if you're interested, and you can also visit the Voters Guide at vote411.org to learn more about candidates and ballot issues. The online guide will be live March 17th, and if you'd rather a print issue, that will be available March 20th in the post dispatch. Our volunteers will also hand-deliver thousands of them across the six counties we cover. Of course, remember to vote. Voting is the easiest way to participate in our democracy, and you can register or update your information up to this Wednesday, March 12th. You can also no-excuse absentee vote beginning Tuesday, March 25th, at the Daniel Boone Grand Glaze and Mid-County Library branches, the Board of Elections offices, the North County Rec Complex, or UMSL. The polls will be open on Tuesday, April 8th, from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Please remember a government-issued photo ID, and if you have any questions at all or want to know more, please either call the St. Louis Board of Elections or the League of Women Voters. Thank you so much, and have a great night.
All of our students stand, and if our league volunteers would raise their hands so we can thank them for their work. I am sure that these candidates will talk to you afterwards, and I hope this was useful to you. And thank you, everybody, and we'll be around to talk outside.